Glendale Economic Development Corporation. We have roll call, please.
Council members, Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian. Here. May we have the report, please?
I may also take the role, I know it's somewhat redundant, but by procedure, we must also take the role of the Glendale Economic Development Corporation. Board members, Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Sinanian.
Here.
May we have the report?
Agenda for the September 23rd, 2014 special public meeting of the City Council and Economic Development Corporation was posted on Thursday, September 18th, 2014 on the bulletin board outside City Hall. First item before you is approval of minutes of special Economic Development Corporation meeting of Tuesday, July 8th, 2014.
The approval?
Second.
Do we need roll call for this? No.
Not necessarily.
So the minutes are approved as submitted. What's next?
Adam Chu is Director of Economic Development regarding work plan of fiscal year 2014-15 and report on major accomplishments achieved in fiscal year 2013-14. Two A is a motion to receive and file the report.
Thank you. Mr. Lanza-Fern.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chairman of the Economic Development Board, we would like to walk through a quick presentation, if the clerk will bring it up for me. Much of this you discussed and saw and approved during the budget, but we wanted to come back and put it in one plan, show you what happened last year, some of the accomplishments of what was the city's economic development program, and going forward, the work plan of the Economic Development Corporation. These are the topics that we'll talk about today, where we've been, some of our initiatives, and as I said, the work plan. Beginning in 1972, we had a redevelopment program up until dissolution in 2012, and we were really based a lot on subsidy, and we made that change after the dissolution of redevelopment to more facilitation of business. In March of 2012, an important date, you adopted an economic development ordinance that gave the authority to carry out a program citywide, and then the last major milestone in July of 2014, you formed the Economic Development Corporation to carry out those tasks, those economic development tasks of the city. As I had mentioned, through the budget, you reaffirmed three initiatives. We're suggesting a fourth, asset management, but these have been with us for some time, and they're broad categories. We try and work within these nine programs. Probably the cornerstone of our success is the concierge program, which really is something that we've tried to instill in all the departments, so that there is somebody that is skilled in that discipline that is taking personal responsibility for each project that comes through. Number five, pre-inspection. This is something we're trying to continue to do, where we go out and visit buildings before leases are signed with our reduced staff. We need to juggle that a little bit more and be a bit more resourceful in how we carry that out. One other that I want to point out, staffing that we don't talk a lot about. The Verdugo Job Center provides staffing assistance, so oftentimes, we will refer a new business to the Verdugo Job Center, and they will do their recruitments for them. Through Class A office, we really wanted to make sure that we were a visible partner to the broker community, to the property owner community. These are some of the activities that we carried out. Probably the one to highlight in events, we held a North Campus, what we called North Campus, event with brokers and property owners to try and discern what their issues were, how we could help them. We found that really north of the 134 freeway is where a lot of our vacancy, our office vacancy was. We have been very successful. Part of it as being successful is being lucky and good. At the same time, we're probably a bit of both. Vacancy is down to 15.6. That's from a high mark in 2011 of 25 percent. So we've really done a nice job at attacking that. Glendale remains a value, although with this vacancy rate going down, we may see rents start to creep up. Going forward, we'll continue the broker event. We'll do it in another area of town. I want to talk a little bit more about an incentive program that we've come up with, that we want your direction to go forward, and then we'll be working with the Workforce Investment Board more closely. As they start to identify industries that need their help, they may also be candidates for our office space. Eighteen-hour city, again, this is where people are shopping, where they're dining, where they're entertaining, extending that business day. We've been very successful. Much of this are things that we have done in the past. ICSC, we had, I think, a very successful meeting there, in not necessarily having a booth, but in really picking out who we wanted to visit with in doing that. We had a whole slew of new stores and restaurants that opened, Bloomingdale's, Nordstrom, Din Tai Fong, among those that probably got the most press. Sales tax increases, we really took a jump over 2013, and we just got our numbers for 2014, I'm sorry, for the second quarter, and we have continued that growth. So we want to continue what we're doing. We want, in 2014-15, we're going to start looking at tourist operators, as opposed to going after one at a time. Could we get tour operators and those people in the tourism business to bring groups to Glendale to visit our attractions? Direct recruitment, we'll continue to do that with your suggestions. We hope we have some announcements very shortly about some new tenants to Glendale. Finally, social media will be a platform that we really start to develop and work, both as a recruiting tool and as a messaging tool. Through the corporation, we think that we can do more promotion of local business than you might be able to do through the city and GTV6. Service to business, again, these are our liaison relationships, those people that walk through the door, probably the two most highest profile, Downtown Glendale Association and Montrose. We've had a couple of projects with them, the movement, the relocation of the farmer's market to Maryland, and then up in Montrose, an ongoing chronic problem with trash bins, and we've been able to sort that out, clean it up, and it's led to a discussion that may go further in cleaning up the entire park and putting them on a consistent collection basis. So we're really pleased with that. Results, we, you have a speaker today. We were nominated as a finalist for Business Friendly City in city, in larger, in the larger population cities. That will be announced in November, so we're one of five. We're very proud of that. Goes beyond economic development into community development, where you've implemented streamlined permitting and really the philosophy of the entire organization to put people into business sooner. We'll continue to do the things that we do, the, probably the one here, Glendale Restaurant Association. We think that there may be an opportunity for an assessment district among all of our restaurants, where they could do buying, they could do trash collection, they could do waste removal to gather as a group and get a lower price for those. So it's something we'd like to explore. We'll also be doing two visioning programs up in Montrose. How can we help drive more traffic? And we'll be looking at different strategies and working with the shopping park and the chambers of commerce and business and property owners up there. Then also, South Glendale, we already started work with the hospital, Glendale Memorial Hospital, and then combining our forces with community development as we develop our community plan for South Glendale. Three initiatives that I wanted to spend a little bit of time with, asset management. We've talked a bit about this and introduced it. We think that there are ways to maximize the value of the public assets while maintaining the purpose for which we acquired them. Parking lots are probably the most, the lowest hanging fruit, the ones that are probably easiest to explore, and we would like to look at perhaps transit occupancy tax generating hotels, development on those sites while replacing that public parking. So that's something that we'll come back to you on an individual basis. The incentive program, this was something that came out of our discussions with brokers, and we utilized the broker community to try and refine it. It took on a lot of different forms in how we would go about creating some kind of incentive for brokers to work on specific properties that we identify or specific uses. What we've come up with is, we want to attack those chronic vacancies where we need to fill those. In talking to the real estate community, a little bit of a surprise to me, it wasn't so much dollars to the broker to go work on it, because in some cases, that created some problems for them. Said, "How can you get something to the tenant so that it is easier for me to sell Glendale to them?" So we're going to be looking at combining the concierge team assignment with some kind of assistance. Depending on the level, we may want to create something where we're providing an amount equal to, let's say, their permit fees, their plan check fees, and then deliver it in a different fashion so that they can get the most, they can get the most mileage out of that assistance. But it would really be based on something that we identify, and this is a program that will come back to you and ask for final permission. I think our next steps are to go out, back out to the community, the broker community, and confirm that the program we've designed makes sense to them. And finally, marketing projects. I think we've been very successful in picking out a variety of marketing tools. We want to be very careful that we're spending our money wisely and getting the most impressions, is the term, most impressions for our dollar. Certainly, the Rose Bowl Visitor Guide, we found to be very successful over the last several years during both the Rose Bowl and when the championship game is in Pasadena. Some of the others are pretty routine. The Glendale Restaurant Guide is something, been something that everybody's asking for, from the chambers, hotels, to the concierge desks at the Galleria and the Americana. Probably our biggest new venture will be, again, as I said, social media, and trying to figure out how we utilize social media for both recruitment and visitor interest. It is a very inexpensive way and can snowball into something that gets a message out very quickly into a very broad audience. Last on that list is a visitor industry video and guide. Again, we want to start targeting the operators in this industry to bring groups of people to Glendale, as opposed to trying to get one at a time to visit the city. Last, some overall economic recovery information, this has been summarized in your report. We're very pleased with the Class A office vacancy, it dropped to 15, as we said, sales tax, second quarter, we just got our numbers today, a preview of those. That will be a very favorable report as well. Something that we didn't touch on were home sales. They are getting back to pre-recession levels, they're up 14 percent, which, again, helps with our delivery of services, because a lot of our revenue is derived from property tax. And then finally, this again, something you may hear from Jess Duran and Don Nakamoto, they're really working on this. Unemployment was down 1.6. Again, statewide down, and so it's a bit of a trend, but not to overlook the efforts of the Verdugo Job Center, who's a great partner for the Economic Development Corporation. And then looking ahead, we just want to continue to take advantage of the momentum we have and the vibrancy, the buzz, the word that's out there. This year will be about setting up the Economic Development Corporation and its legitimacy as the economic development arm for the city. Asset management will be something we'll come back to you and want to look at in a little more detail and try and squeeze more revenue that translates into services for the community. So with that, that completes my report to you, and as I say, I think you have one speaker card.
We have two speaker cards. Do we need to open the public hearing, please, or no?
No public hearing.
Okay, we'll take the first speaker then, Carrie Rogers, followed by Ben Bruce.
Sure.
Yes. How much time do you think you need?
About two minutes.
Okay, you have two minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, and commissioners of the Economic Development Corporation. My name is Carrie Rogers. I'm Vice President of the LA County Economic Development Corporation, and on behalf of the LA EDC today, it's my pleasure to be able to be here to honor the city of Glendale once again as being a finalist for the Most Business Friendly City in LA County Award for the large city category, and to recognize your leadership, your outstanding commitment to business friendliness, excellent programs, job and business creation, and to our partnership. Glendale was the Most Business Friendly City finalist in 2008, 2011, and 2012. LEEDC is a private nonprofit, public benefit corporation. We were created 33 years ago by the LA County Board of Supervisors to attract businesses and to create jobs. In 2006, the LEEDC created the Most Business Friendly City in LA County Award for the main purpose of showcasing those cities that are committed to economic development, that are showing that LA County is a good place in which to do business, and not all places are expensive. LEEDC's Eddie Awards have become one of the most prestigious awards programs in California. They're attended by over 600 business leaders, and they recognize economic leadership and economic development in both business and government. This year, in addition to honoring the cities, we will also be honoring and recognizing UCLA and Honda for their economic development excellence over the past year. Glendale is in good company for the large city finalists this year. They're also joined by Bellflower, Lakewood, Palmdale, and Santa Clarita, and the small city category includes Artesia, El Segundo, Glendora, Pico Rivera, and Vernon. We all hear how hard it is to do business in California, but the city of Glendale has made a commitment, is competitive and is business friendly, and has a passion with its residents and businesses alike. Glendale's belief that every department and every employee is in the economic development business is a unique focus, which helps stand, help the city stand apart. We applaud your business outreach programs and value our relationships as business assistance partners. Ben Bruce, who's our new San Fernando Valley Regional Manager, is looking forward to working with your economic development team on business retention, expansion, and attraction projects, and is here for the remainder of the presentation.
Thank you, Carrie. Well, with the mission of community first, the cornerstone of Glendale's success has been its consistent focus and ability to maintain a high quality of life for its businesses and residents, outreach and engage with businesses as early as possible, seek out innovation to solve issues facing businesses, and implement business friendly practices to ensure business success. Some of the positive comments from the 2014 Blue Ribbon Panel of Judges includes the city's commitment to business, which includes, first of all, lower cost of doing business here in Glendale, no utility user tax, no business tax, no bridge and thoroughfare fees, no signalization fees, no tax increase over the past fiscal year, sales tax sharing agreements, which are unique, and lease tenant subsidies. Glendale also offers a streamlined permit process, a film permit concierge with rapid film permit issuance, parallel plan check program, a fee-based expedited permit processing, business energy solutions, a back-to-business program, as Phil mentioned, workforce development, regular business visits. Glendale is also listed as one of the safest cities in America. You also have several distinguished schools, including nine national Blue Ribbon Schools and 23 state distinguished schools. Glendale residents enjoy a high quality of life in general. There's plenty of job opportunities for residents, community stakeholder meetings, outstanding communication, you have a 24-hour callback policy, minimal amounts of red tape, excellent customer service, customer satisfaction surveys, and an economic development element, which we just heard about, in the city's general plan, setting priorities for future economic development. With that said, on behalf of the LA EDC in LA County, we would like to present the mayor and city council with a county scroll and LA EDC commemorative plaque. Congratulations.
I think for the record, while we do have a utility user tax, we do not have a business license tax or gross receipts tax, so.
What was that tax I was fighting against last year?
Which one was that?
I think we were, it was being couched in some ways as a business license tax.
The business registration.
Registration.
The planting, the zoning.
Do they know about that?
Yeah, I don't know.
It's a replacement for the existing ZUC, so I doubt it.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers, and thank you, Mr. Bruce. Comments? Yes, Ms. Friedman?
First, I want to thank you for coming, and thank you very much for the plaque. We're really looking forward to winning the Eddie Award this year, so it's nice to have you here. We do take business retention, development, creation, all of those things very seriously here in Glendale, and I'm very happy to have watched, over the five years I've been on this council, the refinement of attitudes with the city in terms of our motto, our model of customer service and economic development being forefront of the minds of all of our employees here. And we've done a lot in terms of revising our ordinances to make them more business friendly. In fact, just last week, we passed a series of revisions to our codes that will give flexibility to our planning director and to our staff to keep businesses out of bureaucratic quagmires and having to go through long processes to do things that are relatively simple. So I'm very proud of that. One thing I would like to just comment on is that one thing that I didn't see in this presentation that I believe to be very important economic development tools is arts and culture. We do know that we do Cruz Night, which we know, used to be under the redevelopment umbrella, because it is a lot of fun for everybody, but it's also something that puts us on the map and makes businesses know about Glendale. But there's been a lot of other things in the past few years that have also gotten Glendale attraction and gotten a detention in a good way, the Glendale Bear, some of the events that we've done in the downtown that were art events, the Art and Bacon Windows Project that we did, some of the work that we've done through Glendale Arts, the Alex Theater, all of those sorts of things. Certainly, we have the retail destinations. We've got the new Bloomingdales and the new Nordstroms, which I'm sure the Eddie Award judges know all about, the only city to have a new Bloomingdales in the country, I might add. And that's great, and people will come here to shop, and businesses will come here because we're safe and because we've got great office space, and we're close to the highways and the airport and all of those things. But attracting people to come here who don't normally go out to shop on a weekend, but who, when they're here, will eat in a restaurant, visit a store, all of those things, really becomes a function of having cultural amenities, having the Museum of Neon Art, which we're going to have opening soon, and having those events. So I just want to say that I think that in this list, and we do this again, that we should include Glendale Arts, the different cultural events, the events that we have in our city that attract new people. Just this Saturday, we're going to be having a bike ride that is a cooperation between Cycle LA and Walk Bike Glendale. That will have at least 70 riders, probably more. That's something that has a good chance of bringing people in from outside of the city who may not have ever been to Glendale and seeing it really up in close and personal. So I don't want us to discount, within all of this, things that draw people in that aren't obvious connections in everyone's mind to business development, but to which I think are extremely important to economic development. That's my comment.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
I, living here all my life, I think we're making great progress lately. Sharon and company have done a great job of getting out there and bringing businesses, whatever, to the town. So anything I say, you know, I'm not knocking down, just making comments, I fully support what you're doing. I can read the report, and you can be talking about Bloomingdales and other projects that really general growth and Rick Caruso may happen regardless without our input. I don't think we had anything to do with telling Rick Caruso what to bring in, because I know why he did some of them. Bloomingdales, I'm sure that was general growth. Maybe we played a part in it, but I don't know that. The other thing that, I've said it before and say it again, some of these things almost are policy issues, and I for one have asked for briefings every couple of weeks. I got one or two, and then they disappeared. As an elected representative of the people of this town, I think I have a right to know what you're doing and to be able to comment on those actions. We give you a blank check here, and you're very good at what you do, and I'm not knocking that, but I think I have a right to know periodically what you are doing rather than waiting for a report here. So I'd like to have a meeting every couple of weeks, and here things are coming. Why don't I have a right to know? An elected representative. So I'd like that changed, saying it on TV, because I get tired of asking for it in private and not getting it. Lastly, if I am right, and I was on a long-distance call, so I didn't bring it in here, the governor signed a new bill, because hundreds of bills were sent to him at the last minute, bills were just made up at the last minute, and got in, got his signatures, I understand it. One of those bills, I have it in my office, is reconstructing the Redevelopment Agency in many of its forms, and if that is true, I'd like to know how the opportunity on redevelopment is, how it's going to interface with the Economic Development Council, because it's giving a lot of freedom back that existed. I read the article, but I haven't read the details of the, on the bill that I pulled. I'll provide that to staff if you don't have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Yes, you're going to respond to the?
I think, I will schedule briefings with you, and I think the bill that you're talking about is 2280 Alejo, which would put back many of the same programs of redevelopment, but they're in very, very poor communities and communities that have very, very high crime, to the point where crime is 5 percent more than the state average.
Hey, like I said, I haven't read it. I just read it in the newspaper, and that's why I looked up, got it online. I haven't read it yet. Okay, understandable, that's what it's for.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Najarian?
Thank you. I'm going to have to disagree with Councilman Weaver. Mr. Weaver, you are being far too modest. Let's remember that it was the vision of the then-sitting council, not any of us were on, except you, and Redevelopment Agency, that came up with the plan to entice developers and accept requests for proposals for all the good things that happened in the Americana. So I'm not going to let you wash your hands of this.
Oh, shucks.
It was, it was something, it was a bold step. We took a lot of heat from the community. It went as a referendum, but in the end, it was a vision that the council created, that the Redevelopment Agency created, that brought Rick Caruso in, and who, obviously, you chose Rick Caruso to do that. So you're the only one on the, sitting up here that deserves any of that.
One other thing to throw in.
Praise.
Talked about an 18-hour city a decade ago.
There you go. Now you're right.
Now we're there. Now we're getting there.
That's right. So I just want to point that out, especially before the folks from the LA EDC.
Thank you. Make sure you print that somewhere.
But I would like, Phil, in addition to some of the things that Mr. Weaver talked about, I would like to get a little more details on the job, the job, if we can get a job report, either a dashboard of jobs that are created, in what field, industry, or profession they are created. We keep hearing about new businesses coming in, Avery Label and Whole Foods and all these other headquarters, and other types of jobs as well. If we can just, and I know it takes a lot of manpower to monitor that, but if you could give us updates as to the types of jobs, the number of jobs, net growth or net loss, and whether they're white-collar jobs or blue-collar jobs, I think that's a good indicator that we can keep our eye on. As we try to, I guess, in essence, consolidate Glendale by creating this As we try to, I guess, in essence, consolidate Glendale by creating this housing downtown, the idea is that not only would they shop and eat and get their services in Glendale, but they'd also seek employment. And let's see if there's any employment changes that are going and follow a trend if we could.
That would be, that would fall under the category of closer alignment with the Workforce Investment Board. Don Nakamoto and Jess Duran, they have some of that, and so we'll start to track it as well.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Friedman?
I have a question on the, where you talk about launching visioning programs to inform the general plan in the Montrose area and South Glendale, I believe. Does that include Adams Hill? I know you have a plan for, to make it a gateway to Glendale. Can you speak on that?
In the two that I described, the South Glendale Plan, that will pick up Adams Square. When I had mentioned the hospital, we're already working with them. But Adams Square is one of our recognized business districts. In fact, they had a business assessment, a business improvement district formed. And so, yes, we'll continue to work with Adams Square on strategies to build their commerce and start to have adjacent homeowners using that more further goods and services.
Great. My second question is about the broker program that you're talking about. Can you expound on that a little bit? I'm not quite sure the broker incentive, the broker program.
We were looking at chronic vacancies, areas that have been vacant for three-plus years. Why isn't somebody going there? Is it because the broker community just isn't looking at it or what? So we set out to create an incentive program to get brokers to pay attention to those specific spaces, or if it happened to be a specific user that we wanted to attract to the city, somebody that would really be the catalyst to the art and entertainment district, let's say, and create that nighttime use. So there are several, between Scott and Darlene and Sharon and Jackie and me, we've had several different iterations of this, and so we tried to put it together. You could pay a broker directly, you could put it into tenant improvements in the building, you can make it favorable financing, a loan of some kind. There's a whole number of vehicles that we can use. And when we went to the broker community and asked them, what would work best for you, what came back to us is oftentimes we'll have somebody that wants to go into the space, but they don't know if they can make it. They don't know what it'll cost, they don't know if they'll fit, and absent drawing some plans and doing a little plan check, they really can't answer that question. Now, a lot of them said they're willing to draw the plan because they're pretty sure, but they don't have the money to do the plan check, let's say. And so we may design a program where we'll pay the plan check. We're so sure that once you get into Glendale, you're going to want to make it work, we'll pay for the plan check. We've also found that one of the major expenses for somebody that is relocating a large office is their relocation expense. Now, for somebody like Avery Dennison, that's the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we're not going to, we just don't have the resources to match that. But it might be a smaller amount that we pay in relocation assistance where they come. And it might be something we say, look, we'll make it equal to your permit fees. You do the plan check, and if you sign, we'll do this. So we want to go back to the broker community and really nail that down, what mechanism works best for you, then bring the program back to the Economic Development Board for approval.
Thank you.
Ms. Friedman?
Yeah, just in general, I'm more comfortable with finding ways to streamline, bring costs down, rather than giving financial handouts to businesses. So just as we go forward, when we're looking at programs, just keep that in mind. There's a lot we can do in terms of making things easier to operate and flexibility, and we'll be voting tonight on some of those. But to me, continuing down that road and making it to where people want to do business here because it's an easy place to do business, rather than come here just because we're going to give them a one-time financial boost, I think that's more equitable because it doesn't make you choose between different businesses, what businesses you're going to give one incentive to and you're not going to give it to another business. And it makes the entire environment good for, hopefully forever. So I think you get more bang for your buck that way.
Okay. And I have some comments also. Thank you, Ms. Friedman. I have a different take on that. I think as a general rule, that may be a good one, and, you know, being equitable is very important, but we have to be also strategic in the decisions that we make in terms of business development, because, for example, with all the criticism and all, you know, with significant resources that were used to make the Americana a reality, it turned out to be a strategic victory for the City of Glendale because it spurred all the growth and all the development that's been happening since 2006. So what I'm saying is that I don't think having a blanket rule, basically saying, oh, we're not going to look, you know, at a particular business with a different eye, is a good idea, having a blanket rule like that. In terms of our successes, I mean, our successes are listed, and we're being, obviously, it's being properly acknowledged by, whether it's by the LAEDC, or, you know, we have this, I don't know if folks can see this on their screens, but the Los Angeles Business Journal has our corporation being featured on its cover. And we've pretty much done a pretty good job of using media to promote Glendale, and God knows, I've been part of it because of my position, and that's great. I think we shouldn't stop there. We should always strive for better, and I know that's what our Economic Development Corporation staff realizes and does on a daily basis. So these are my ideas. Increasingly, I'm seeing more and more attention being paid by Los Angeles and especially the coastal towns, Santa Monica and such, to the IT sector. They're having these conferences about more high-speed connectivity and their businesses. Apparently, Southern California, specifically those parts of the city, have a serious share of the IT industry in the state of California. Now, I know that we've spoken, that we want that kind of thing in Glendale. We want the IT industry to develop further. We want more businesses being in Glendale. So I think that should be a part of our plan also. It should be a targeted area of the economy that we aggressively go after. And whether we have to participate in these conferences and see what, you know, what they're doing, just make sure, if nothing else, they realize that we're there and we want to be part of it. So that's one. Second, as I was away for a few days, these past few days, and I had some time, and I was able to peruse through some magazines, namely Los Angeles Magazine and Food &amp; Wine. And one of the food and wines had listings of the best restaurants in the L.A. area, and the Los Angeles Magazine has a listing of the best new restaurants on an issue-per-issue basis. So they have that listing and broken down and regional. And we're qualified as northeastern Los Angeles. And to my great displeasure, Glendale, no restaurant from Glendale was listed in any of them. That very Los Angeles Magazine, that earlier on, our Housing Authority member, Don Mincy, pointed out, has a photo of Glendale's old train station. Thank you. Ironically, didn't list any of Glendale's restaurants. And this was true also, that one issue of the food and wine. And, I mean, that could be a result of a number of things. That could be a result of the preferences of the journalists that are working on this, but when there's consistency, I'm worried. So what I'm saying is, we've had huge strides in that department. I think we can do much better. So what are the mechanisms to make this happen faster? Whether, you know, L.A. has one or two food festivals or food fairs, restaurant fairs like a month, almost a month, and apparently all the restaurateurs show up, and it's an opportunity for all of them to exchange information and exchange business ideas and talk about where the new opportunities are. Maybe we should be more aggressive in attending those, again, whether it's staff or council members or whoever, whatever it takes. And another major issue, of course, is, I think there's no escaping it in terms of having to deal with the consequences of it, is Mayor Garcetti's plan for increased minimum wage. That's going to impact us one way or another, whether we become part of it, we don't become part of it. So, you know, I've already asked staff for a report on that issue, but, again, thinking in terms of economic development, I think this is something to keep in mind as to how that's going to impact our economic development, one way or another. And in the end, you know, again, we're well on our way to really, truly being an 18-hour city. I think we haven't gotten there yet, and every time, again, I work on Brand Boulevard, I, you know, I look at different hours of the day, just measuring how much activity there is. We're not quite there. So anyway, good job. We're going to do better. We're going to try really hard, and we're going to be the best in the county and in the state and the country. That's it from me.
There's a motion.
There's a motion, yes. Is there a motion?
No, there's not.
Not a file.
A note and file.
Okay.
Your motion, or a second?
Receive and file the report.
Second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Board members, Devine? Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Chair Sinani?
Yes.
And what's next, the German?
The German for City Council and GEDC.
We adjourn for council.
Second.
We'll be adjourned for successor agents or economic development.
Second.
We are adjourned at 3:50.